All right, I'm going to call to order our March 15th special workshop on DF grades at AUSD secondary schools. Can I have a roll call, please?
Student trustee Dana?
Here.
Student trustee Vera?
Here.
Trustee Boyd?
Here.
Trustee Davidson?
Here.
Trustee Dos? Vice President Drom?
Here.
President Hinckley?
Here.
Superintendent Wells?
Here.
Great, thank you. And can we have our mission and vision statement and meeting norms read, please?
The mission of Albany Unified School District is to provide excellent public education that empowers all to achieve their fullest potential as productive citizens. AUSD is committed to creating comprehensive learning opportunities in a safe, supportive, and collaborative environment, addressing the individual needs of each student.
Our meeting norms are as follows: one, maintain a focus on what is best for our students; two, ensure a safe environment for all views to be expressed, treating each other, staff, and the public respectfully; three, endeavor to find common solutions to issues through collaboration without sacrificing one's beliefs and what is best for students; and four, make a commitment to effective deliberation, each one listening with an opened mind while others are allowed to express their own points of view even if one disagrees.
Great, thank you. So we have just one action item tonight, which is to approve our agenda, and our agenda is one review and discussion item, a report from our principals and staff on DNF grades at AUSD secondary schools. I will take a motion to approve our agenda.
I move that we approve our agenda for this evening.
Second.
Student trustee Dana?
Yes.
Student trustee Vera?
Yes.
Trustee Boyd?
Yeah.
Trustee Davidson?
Yes.
Trustee Dos, absent. Vice President Drom?
Yes.
President Hinckley?
Yes. Great, thank you. The agenda is approved with four board votes and one absence and two student board members in support. So I'll hand it over to you, Superintendent Wells.
Thank you, Madam Chair, President Hinckley. Tonight, we have coming from my secondary schools, elementary, I mean, secondary, meaning middle and high school. We have our two finest with us, high school principal and our middle school principal, who will be leading the presentation. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to our assistant superintendent, Dr. Anne Shin.
Thank you, Superintendent Wells. Good evening, Superintendent Wells, Board of Education trustees, Albany community. We are here tonight to engage in the district's cycle of continuous improvement process by reviewing and analyzing secondary students' grades, especially focused on DNF grades as the data point for analysis. Our secondary leaders will present student grades from the fall and the spring of 2021-22 school year, as well as the fall of this school year. Then they will share their analysis of this data, as well as the strategic plans that have been developed by their site teams to respond to the data in order to improve achievement outcomes for all of our students. Our role as district leaders is to serve as thought partners in this data analysis process and to provide resources to support the implementation of the site's strategic plans as the next step of the data-driven cycle of improvement. Next slide, please.
All right, one second. My mouse is stuck. Oh, no. Oh, no.
All right. To this end goal, our high school principal, Mr. McNally, and our middle school principal, Ms. Brill, will review student DF grades disaggregated by grade levels, departments, ethnicities, and special populations. They will also present disaggregated data by students receiving two or more D and F grades, understanding that the root causes and responses may differ for students experiencing challenges in multiple courses. Then they will discuss their current intervention strategies and potential next steps to provide additional supports for improvement. And now I hand it over to Principal McNally to begin the presentation.
Great, thank you. Welcome, everybody. There's a couple of things I want to just kind of first highlight before we really get it started and dig into the data. Actually, Julie, could we go ahead and just advance to the first slide? So one thing, and I believe this just came across in the questions that we just received, there is a little bit of data missing from this that I want to highlight and make a point about, but I think was seen as a discrepancy in some of this. So what we have here is the data on the numbers and then percentages of students who have two or more D or F grades. So this is a little bit different than what was presented originally in the fall. And actually, I wish we had along with this the numbers of students who had just one D or F grade for comparison purposes. So the reason this is really important, and I think we're probably going to come back to this over and over and over again, is when I see a student has a D or F in one subject matter area, but is generally being successful in the other areas, that usually is related to something specific to that subject matter. Whereas if a student has multiple Ds or Fs, that indicates to me a bigger picture issue that needs to be addressed more on the scale of kind of the whole student, whole school. So one of the things we wanted to do today would show some of the data of the numbers of students with two or more Ds or Fs. That's a data point that I track a lot, because that's something I think about as a principal, as indicating students having trouble accessing school in general, as opposed to maybe having challenges in specific subject matter areas. So as we go through this today, one of the things I'm going to do is try to highlight where we're looking at really two or more Ds or Fs, because that tells me that there's bigger issues with students accessing school. And then also where we're looking at just Ds or Fs in one particular area or one particular group of students, because that indicates probably more of a challenge in one specific academic area. I think one of the things that's missing here and probably be good for us to provide as a follow-up is some of this same data for two or more Ds or Fs, right next to the numbers for one D or F. Because actually, one of the things that's an interesting trend that we've seen in our data going forward is the... Julie, I don't know if this happened for everybody, but the screen just kind of squished, and I can't really see anything. Are other people having that same? There we go, we're back. Not really sure what happened there. Anyway, so I want to just highlight that point, because I think it's important, and I think it's really illustrative of where students are having challenges, especially, and I'm going to get more into detail about this, traditionally Albany High's interventions have been focused more on specific academic areas, whereas some of the data now is really telling us more that we're probably looking at some bigger issues around just general access to school. So I wanted to provide some of that context, and I'll try to highlight some more of this as we go forward. So this first slide here breaks down by grade level, the numbers of students with two or more Ds or Fs. There's a couple of things here that are, I really want to highlight, first of all, the first two groups, the 2021 fall and 2020, 2021 spring. So those are during the pandemic. And this is a really big deal, because of course, our DNF rates were higher during those times. So we'll notice that across pretty much all grade levels, the DNF rates were much higher for the 2020-21 school year than they were this fall. That trend also holds true for the fall of 2019. And even really, well, I mean, we of course didn't have, we had pass no pass, but even then, we still had fairly high no pass rates for the fall of 2020. So what this does tell us is we have seen improvements in the DNF rates since the pandemic. Another trend that's illustrated here that we have found to be common and continues throughout high school, and this has been something as long as we've tracked in the data, the DNF rates are much higher for underclassmen than they are for seniors. And so while this data does illustrate two or more Ds or Fs, this is definitely a trend that we see going on with both the students getting one D or multiple Ds, which is they are much more likely to get Ds and Fs when they are freshmen than when they are older students. There's a few reasons for this. One is that simply students are required to take more classes when they are freshmen. Another one is, we know this very well, transitions are often difficult for students, and the transition from the expectations of eighth grade to the expectations of ninth grade can be sometimes jarring for students and difficult. So one of the focuses that we've had as a school is how do we ease that transition? That, of course, was a really big deal this year, when we were welcoming in students who, actually, two different grade levels of students who had not been students on our campus before. So we know those transition periods are tough. There's also just a maturity effect that happens as well as students get older. Also, as students get older, they tend to be able to take more of the classes they're specifically interested in, so that increases engagement and also improves academic performance as well. So like I said, the takeaways from this slide really are that the fall, this fall, we have seen an improvement, which we're happy about, but we do have a persistent trend of students getting Ds and Fs more when they are younger students, which of course echoes into the summer school programs and our options for credit recovery and UC eligibility, which we'll talk a little bit more about later. You can go on to the next slide, Julie. So this is the same Ds and Fs, DNF rates, broken down by student populations. So I would kind of caution against drawing conclusions from the Alaskan or American Indian population or native student population, because the sample size is so small. Some of these other groups do have some very small sample sizes as well. But one of the things that we are seeing is that we do have persistently higher Ds and Fs rates, especially in the multiple DNF rates for Black African-American students and Hispanic Latinx students as compared to our other student populations. These trends were also much more significant during the pandemic. And during, so the first two columns, the fall of 2021, or sorry, fall of 2020, and then the, or I'm sorry, the fall of 2021, and then spring here. So the effect of the pandemic and the effect of the pandemic schooling was much more significant on those student populations, which of course is going to then have implications for how we do credit recovery and some of those options. And we do persistently have higher DNF rates for those student populations. Julie, could you scroll down slightly so we can see the bottom? So just as a comparison here between these different groups, we do persistently have usually two or three times higher, but sometimes a little bit more, DNF and multiple DNF rates in our Hispanic and Black students. And that has persisted. What we saw during the pandemic was the rates for all students were higher, and proportionally, those students also had higher persistent DNF rates. Next slide, please. So this is then broken down by some specific special populations. Now, one thing to remember in this slide is we're not showing students who do not fit into any of these groups. What we've seen here is that English learners actually had a pretty significant effect during the pandemic. We have, of course, improved some of these numbers across all of these groups. The, I'll talk a little bit more about interventions that we did specifically related to the pandemic and English learners and some things we're talking about later. Our economically disadvantaged students also had elevated rates during the pandemic. And of course, special education also had higher multiple DNF rates. Those rates have come down as well, but they're, of course, still a little bit higher than we'd like to see. And compared with students who do not fit into any of these population groups, these are still elevated as far as the number of multiple Ds and Fs. Let me go on the next slide. So now I want to make clear, this is then data that are by department, but then this is one D or F. This also means that students will be counted in multiple categories if they have Ds or Fs in multiple areas. So scroll down a little bit, Julie, so we can see the whole thing. So the trends here that I would like to highlight is that the foreign language and math had higher rates during the pandemic. And those rates have come down quite a bit, especially in foreign language. Now, there have been some questions about why this, why this is. We have been having a lot of challenges with, and actually should say world language, with world language and consistent staffing, especially introductory level courses, and consistent staffing with staff that share our educational vision. We are making a lot of progress in that area, which is, I think, why we've had a lot of improvement this fall, and we're encouraged by some of what the future can bring as well. One other thing I want to highlight and why some of these numbers are a little bit higher is math and world language are also two of our most rigidly sequenced departments, because they build so much on the growth from previous subject matter. So those were also much more significantly impacted during the pandemic. And the disruptions caused during the pandemic and kind of students being able to do math class through Zoom and those kinds of things, the physical education numbers are actually a little bit surprising and alarming, because the physical education DNF rate currently is actually somewhat, is almost the same as what it was during the pandemic years, the previous two semesters. I'm a little hesitant to say specifically why I believe that is. A couple hypotheses I put forward is if you think about Zoom school versus in-person school, there's probably no subject that is more different than PE when it comes to Zoom school and in-person school. And so when we talk about transitions being difficult and possibly transitions being disruptive, going from an environment where you're spending so much time at home to an environment where you actually have to change clothes and do those kinds of things, it's a really jarring change. And I think part of what we're seeing with the PE DNF rates is a response to just the changes in schooling coming from kind of the pandemic to current in-person schooling. PE, we do see Ds and Fs, and I'll say that PE, I actually see, to me, it's often an indicator of kind of social-emotional functioning if students are getting Ds and Fs in PE, because PE really emphasizes that, like, how do you feel in your body? How do you feel coming to school? How do you feel kind of doing, following instructions and doing those other things with your peers? And so that's one of the things I pay attention to in the physical education numbers. Though, you know, specific interventions around PE can actually be somewhat difficult for those reasons. So I'm going to move on to the next slide. So then this is the data that is from the fall of the previous school year. So this is the first semester of kind of all in-person or all Zoom school. So could we scroll down slightly? So a few trends I want to illustrate here. Obviously, it's the higher rates of Ds and Fs for Black and African-American students, especially in the world languages department. Like I said, I would actually attribute this probably to some real differences around how some people approached schooling and kind of creating inclusive environments, and that's one of the things that we've been really working on around world languages. The rates were also higher for Hispanic and Latinx students as compared to the rest of the student population. We did, again, see some persistently higher DNF rates in the math department, the science department, there is a typo there. So many of the trends that we saw during the, or let me put it this way, so our Black and African-American students are not performing as well as other students. That trend has definitely been exacerbated, and in the math department, where we do see somewhat higher DNF rates that has been magnified for Black and African-American and Hispanic and Latinx students, especially as compared to other student populations. Not quite as much in some other departments, and then also world languages as well. There was a question from the board about which languages are usually taken by Hispanic and Latinx students. The most commonly taken language by Hispanic Latinx students is Spanish. One thing I would just make a point about is that we do not offer classes such as Spanish for Spanish speakers, that the Spanish course that we offer is a, basically, a second language acquisition type of course. So, but the most commonly taken world language at Albany High is Spanish. Move on to the next slide, please. So this is the second semester of last school year. Many of the same trends that I've talked about did persist. Again, we do have some, some small sample sizes here, so it can be a little bit hard to draw some conclusions. But again, some of the same issues, especially with Black African-American students and their performance in world languages and math, did persist into the spring semester as well. So many of the trends here are similar. And then let's go on to advance to the next slide, the current semester, or that, sorry, this last fall. So we did see some improvement, but we still see disparate impacts, especially around world languages and math when it comes to African-American students. Some of those trends do still persist for Hispanic and Latinx students as far as DNF performance. And then it's just that the numbers are not, or the performance was definitely better for African-American, or sorry, Asian-American Pacific Islander, two or more races, and white in some of these areas. Going in advance to the next slide. So again, looking at special populations on a per department basis. So we see some of the same trends that we talked about around race and ethnicity, which is special education students generally having a little bit more, or both special education, socio-economically disadvantaged, and English learner, we do see kind of more lower performance in the math and world language areas. Go on, advance to the next slide. So then this is the spring of last year. We still see some of those same persistent trends, though actually, in this case, the English learners are a little bit more noticeable. Again, I would caution against really small sample sizes in some of these numbers, especially when talking about two or three students out of a school of 1,200. And go on to the next slide, please. So then this is, I believe, from the most recent semester. So we do see, again, some of the same trends here around world languages and math, and then impacts, especially for special education students, and then socio-economically disadvantaged students. And one thing I would just caution about, too, just looking at some of this data, is because of the policies of the board regarding how we grade, put grades on transcripts from other institutions, some students get world language credit by taking American Sign Language at Berkeley City College, or they take some other courses at Berkeley City College. Those do not end up being reflected on our transcripts for students, just something to note. Next slide. So some strategies that we are currently doing and implementing. So while the DNF rates have been higher in math, that is, of course, an ongoing trend nationwide in student data. At the same time, math is also the place where we're actually targeting our most academic interventions at the moment. We have a separate Math 1 intervention course, which we do not have intervention courses specific to other subject matter areas. We also have a Math 2 intervention course. In addition, for Math 3, we have an advisory that's specifically targeted towards math intervention and intervention for Math 3 students. We also provide a significant amount of teacher-led tutoring for the math department. Several afternoons a week, we're providing drop-in tutoring for students. We also have available a homework lab class that is a place to both teach study skills to students, as well as provide them with a space to work. We're also providing teacher-led tutoring in Spanish. We have as part of our interventions advisory, which is a time for students to come and get additional support from their teachers. We do have notifications for DNF students, or have students receiving Ds and Fs. Part of our FTE as well is intervention counselors. So we have .4 FTE of counselors focused on intervention and intervention purposes. Now, .4 FTE is, of course, not very much, so we're really triaging those counselors. And as you can see from the data that was just presented, we really focus our intervention counselors a lot more around ninth and 10th grade, because that's where we generally have the most need and the most support. So those intervention counselors, a significant part of their job is regularly pulling grades and attendance data, and then sharing that data with the other counselors, and also then planning counselor seconds with students, and then also meeting with students themselves. So that's another place where what they look for is places where we're seeing multiple Ds and Fs, or multiple issues with attendance, to try to have targeted interventions for those students. Next slide, please. So we are doing more interventions in the area of social-emotional learning. We have work to create more social-emotional learning lessons for advisory. We, as a school, have a student services team that meets once a week, that's composed of administrators, counselors, the program specialists from special education, and our school psychologist and our mental health lead, where we look at students who are both referred by teachers, as well as students who are showing signs of either poor attendance or lower academic performance. And what we do there is look for ways to implement interventions for those students, reach out to them, coordinate with their families, and do those sorts of things. As I said, we do have the intervention counselors. We have been doing more social-emotional learning and implicit bias training. That was training we did during the last school year. This year, we've done training for staff around trauma and trauma-informed practices. And this is also an area that we intend to do a lot more intervention for our students. Next slide. So where we plan to go next, we do, of course, have fairly limited intervention resources. We're always trying to find ways to focus them better. We do have some grant money coming down to help increase access to UCA through G. A significant part of where we intend to focus that money is on adopting some school-wide programs that will help us serve some of those students that have been underserved in our, in the data that we can see here, especially socio-economically disadvantaged students, as well as students who would be first-generation college-going, as well as the students from racial and ethnic groups that have not been as well-served in our school. So we're looking at adopting a program such as Avid that would have targeted interventions for specific students, and then also ways to coordinate our teaching practices school-wide to try to create more success for students who've not been as successful in Albany High School. Work that we've also done is to try to standardize our tier-one interventions, so those practices being done by all teachers across all classrooms. I know there's been a lot of conversation about universal design for learning, and that's where we can really see some growth, is by standardizing our practice to make sure it's accessible to all students, also incorporating more culturally responsive practices, which is an ongoing area of growth for us at Albany High. Another important part would be providing supports for students, especially during those transition times. So we've talked about ways to try to increase the effectiveness of our orientation and transition processes to also help ninth graders kind of learn how to be students. Another area that we also plan to target, some of our grant funding, is develop specific methods for case management for credit-deficient students. So find ways to help students recover their lower grades, their DNF grades, beyond just summer school. So we're currently working to pilot a program for the next school year that would have a staff member who would focus on trying to build academic skills for these students, as well as create a space for them to do credit recovery and maintain UC eligibility. And I believe that is it for the high school.
And Dr. Shin, did you want us to do questions for the high school and then move on to the middle school, or how do you want to, how do you want us to do this?
I had originally thought we would go through the entire presentation first, but if the board, okay, again, let's go through the entire presentation.
And there may be some discussion points and questions that are applicable to both schools as well, I would imagine, because as I'm listening to Mr. McNally share his data and having glanced at his data earlier as well, there's a lot of, a lot of crossover similarities and trends, and, and I think pieces we can draw from one another for strategies as well. So. It was, I'm going to jump into my part, so hello, everyone. And thank you for this time to discuss this important topic. So first of all, I also just want to start off with a couple of overarching pieces to mention. One is, I know obvious, but because it goes through all the different data, so I'm not repeating it, just the piece around 2021 being distance learning and kind of what we saw from particularity groups who struggled more during distance learning, even with all of the different interventions and pieces we had in place, and so, and then, of course, coming into 2122 after having time at home. So I think it's important for us to contextualize it and so that we can help to understand the data as best as we can to be able to really utilize it effectively. So that was one piece that I wanted to point out. And then the other part is something that Mr. McNally also said in the beginning. So that was one piece that I wanted to point out, and then the other part is something that Mr. McNally also said in the beginning. Which is just the piece around the two plus Ds or Fs, which. Again, you know, to me has a sort of similar meaning. In the sense that if it's a student who has a DRF from one subject matter, we're looking at what's happening in that class or do they have gaps? Is it, you know, kind of what's going on in that particular class, but when it soon as two or more Ds or Fs, I'm. Oftentimes what we're finding as we're pulling up who these students are, that there's some other bigger piece going on, whether. Whether it has to do with the way that they're engaging in our school community and what we need to be doing to shift that or whether there are some bigger familial. Life, mental health challenges, you know, that and that are important to for us to recognize so that we can target the correct interventions to really support those students. So I'm going to jump in and so starting off with with this slide. What we're seeing here are the students who have two or more Ds or Fs by grade level. And you know, during distance learning, if we looked across the different grade levels. You know, actually, our our seventh grade was the the most intense. But in returning to in person school in 2122. It's definitely our sixth graders who have the highest number of two or more Ds or Fs, which. I think as a transition year and without a lot of the pieces in place, they're coming off of distance learning in fifth grade that we usually do a lot of transitional pieces to middle school. And here they are being students again in a brand new environment and so. I'm interested in looking at kind of what that rebound would look like. Next slide, please. Thank you. So this is now breaking the data down for the two plus Ds or Fs by by ethnicity. And one of the pieces that we can really. Observe on here are are just a couple of a couple of trends. We can see our black African American and our Hispanic Latinx students. Are disproportionately in the DNF category. And so I say, thank you for fitting all of that on one screen. Julie, appreciate that. And and so and that was across the board, we see that. With a distance learning as well as 2122. Although this fall, even though those the disproportionality is still there and still important to recognize, you know, like you can see for the black African American students, it's two students. This fall as opposed to 11 last spring. And with our Hispanic Latinx students, it also dropped significantly, so still disproportionate, but better. Better than we were than than the year prior. Next slide, please. We look at our special populations here and. We can, we can observe the again, some disproportionality with these enoughs and I draw particular attention. We know that our English learners were really struggling during distance learning, it was something we were constantly talking about and working on and trying to figure out how to adjust for. And then our low socioeconomic. Students have under that category. Again. We can see disproportionality. Across the board, but it particularly during distance learning and we know with that in distance learning, the different families and different students were really impacted in different ways. You know, whether students had parents at home who had jobs that allowed them to be around and present. Whether they had parents who. Who had, who spoke English fluently, like all of those different factors in terms of supporting students at home, I think had different impacts. But still, when we look at our Ds and Fs, all of the populations are even though much better statistically, still disproportionately. Impacted as as we as we return, one of the pieces of data that I would be really interested in seeing. Is the the breakdown by race ethnicity. Cross checked with the, you know, cross reference with economically disadvantaged to see what what that breakdown looks like. I think that would be really important and interesting data. Especially as we're really working on, how do we level the playing field for students who. When they're struggling in a class, the parent gets in the tutor versus students that need us to make sure that we're providing that as part of our equitable education program. Okay, next slide, please. So in here, we're looking at our slides broken down by by subject matter. And so as we, as we look through there, there's a couple of. Couple of pieces that I want to highlight. One is just looking at in the the fall of 2122. You can still see that the the math and world languages are elevated. In terms of numbers of a number of Ds and Fs, excuse me. And those and those percentages were also elevated. During distance learning, English, however, during distance learning. Was elevated, but not during 2122, excuse me for one second. Thank you. All right, let's go to the next slide. Okay. So now we're able to look at our subject matter by ethnicity. Starting off with the fall of 2021. And so what we can see here. Is that our black and African American students and our Hispanic Latinx students in particular. Disproportionately across the different subjects have elevated numbers, two or more race also has elevated numbers in a couple of areas, but not nearly as significantly. We can see also in particular here that. The black African American and Hispanic Latinx students in math. And as well as. In English for our Hispanic Latinx students. It surfaces again. But really across the board, you can see science, we can see social studies. So again, those are populations that across the board, it's not just showing up with one subject, it's showing up across the board. Next slide, please. And we're seeing the same same patterns on here with slightly more elevation with two or more races. Go on to the next slide, please. Okay, and now we're back to in person schooling, so. The numbers certainly are better than they were and we are still seeing disproportionality for black African American Hispanic Latinx students. And you know, with our black African American students in these slides, the percentages are disproportionate, you can see the numbers are no more, no higher than two. Which is not to disregard in the sense that two students are two students that are important to us, but just to notice in terms of how we're processing it from a statistical perspective. And our Hispanic Latinx students, you can see a math and social studies are showing us the most, the most elevated. Next slide, please. Excuse me. Thank you. Okay, and then on our special populations. Again, we're seeing. Some very similar trends. In terms of the populations being elevated in these areas. And we'll see as we go through these that those numbers are much better when we can put in the in person supports that we have available at our school. But we still again, see the same proportionality disproportionality. Go on to the next slide, please. And then next one. So again, we can see the numbers improving here, but again, our socioeconomically disadvantaged category on here. Is elevated in particularly in math, our special ed students. You can see disproportionately across the board, some subjects more so than others, as well as our English learners. So again, better in person, but still, still of note. Next slide, please. So when we're looking at our strategies for intervention and we are always evaluating, reevaluating and working on what's next. First of all, we do offer support classes for math and reading in all grades and we look every year at those. Those numbers just to what we view as success, the students who are exiting out of those preferably. You know, during the same school year, some students exit out at the end of the school year. And so I think this year we're seeing. There have been students exiting out, of course, but less than we see in a typical year, and I think part of that is the 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 time with distance learning, there was more catching up that was needing to happen. Cobra study, I think, is an incredibly important class that we offer. Again, when we're looking at students access to support, a lot of grades have to do with homework, not all, but a lot, a huge portion of it. And so what types of supports do students have in place to for homework completion? What do they do when they're stuck or is there somebody they could ask questions to? You know, is there a space where they can be doing that work? And we know that students in different categories like our low socioeconomic students often have more responsibilities at home. In terms of with siblings and and that sort of thing, you know, there's, there's other types of challenges that come up. So to us, the the piece with Cobra study is it's, it's, it's even better than an after school homework support, which we would really like to have in place. Because during the school day, it means that we're providing a space for them or we're teaching study skills and we're providing someone who's basically case managing them and then helping them with their homework. Helping them manage, you know, helping them to go through and have systems in place, helping them to work ahead, helping them to scaffold assignments. We have not traditionally had Cobra study in the sixth grade, but this year we started that knowing that we were going to have sixth graders coming in who needed particular help with their transition. Another kind of leveling of the playing field is the Cobra Tutoring Program, which was a great success last year. We've talked about this at previous board meetings. We have not been able to get it off the ground this year. I think what it's going to require is a different level of funding was one thing when it was on Zoom and we just had somebody who was wonderful, who could step into it. But when we're advertising for this type of a position where someone is really able to. Manage a program like this, we we really need to put more funding into it in order to have a. A high enough pay to attract qualified individual and we've done, I've done a lot of work with trying to recruit and working with the university and all sorts of pieces and just have not been able to get it off the ground, unfortunately. I also will note that in addition to that, we used to have the Y achievers at our school and they were not able to get that program off the ground this year. But we would also really like to be looking at how we could offer tutoring within the school day. And we have been having some conversations about about that topic. Okay, we also have student action teams and student success teams and so. What I'd say is is for students who are really struggling and our counselors, we have one counselor per grade level who would do a phenomenal job of. Supporting students and families. For students who are receiving the supports and doing all those pieces and it's not enough, they're still getting these enoughs. We will hold a student success team meeting for them and it's an opportunity for the parents. Or parents or guardians, the teachers, the counselor and administrator to come together and talk about, let's look at the history of of the student. Let's look at what's been successful with them, what are their strengths that we can draw on and play on and what and what is not working and then we put action steps in place. And then the counselors follow up on those action steps, usually three to four weeks after the meeting. In addition to, you know, kind of checking along the way, but to more of an official check and we often have a follow up SSD. How did it work? How are we doing? Are we making a difference? What else needs to happen? Those have been really successful with a number of our families and students. We also have intensive counseling support, weekly academic check ins tailored support. Whether that's helping students work through organizational skills or whether it's helping the student coordinate between. The teachers and them oftentimes, you know. Parents will ask for this type of support if it's something that, you know, a role that they might play even, you know, can you please help me coordinate this piece? And then we also have conferences, we're actually in our conference week right now, we've got conferences all afternoon today. And that we use the DNF list list in order to determine who needs conferences and similarly with those conferences. We collect feedback from other teachers and our conferences are really action oriented. Where we talk about, you know, what's, what are the student strengths? What are areas of concern and what are the action steps? What are we going to do to shift things? And then there's a follow up process for that. Next slide, please. Thank you. And so we also have a number of social emotional strategies for intervention that we have in place. Counseling services are a huge one, our counselors loop with their students and so they get to know students and families really well. And they, we have all sorts of services that are tailored, some for individuals. Some for groups, we have weekly lunch gatherings, we'll do. We'll, we'll have our counselors run groups depending on pieces that are coming up, whether it's like a depression anxiety type of piece, whether it's. Students who are going through divorce, it can be in any number of pieces, but they're really responsive to the needs that they're seeing. And they also really do a lot with helping students to connect with one another as well as to work through things that are challenging. Because we know that for our students, that social connection is a really important piece of their school connection. And we have a student success space, which is incredibly helpful for students, everything from goal setting to strategies to. Helping them to, if they need a break or a focus resetting, so that spaces is very. Greatly used, we also have more intensive mental health services and our mental health team will help parents to connect with outside mental health if they need help with that. And if that's something they can't access, then we provide mental health services at our site. We are completely full again, next year, though, we have an additional office space that we'll be using, so we'll have an additional intern at our site. And be able to double the amount of mental health services we're providing, which is very exciting. We have student action teams and that's something that we moved to during the pandemic and kept. And it's when when there's any sorts of of concerns or behaviors that are coming up. That we need to be figuring out what to do and for some students, it can be acting out in class for other students, it can be kind of withdrawing. It can be that a student has a lot of big things going on in their life, but it's a way for us and that's the difference between the. Student success teams is that involves families, our student action team is internal when we feel like we need to just coordinate on how we're supporting the student. Just at the school before we get to that, the point of a student success team meeting. Professional development, we have done a great deal of professional development on a wide range of relevant topics from culture responsive. Practices to restorative practices to trauma informed practices and. Doing work on intersectional identity and communication and and a number of other pieces. And that's something that just needs to continue, needs to be ongoing. Our advisory program is very unique. Focuses on community focuses on social emotional learning with a social justice lens. And this year we've added our peer RJ program. And they go into advisories once a month to lead circles, community building circles for students and that that peer leadership is amazing. And then they, we are going to be training them on Friday, a small group of them on leading tier two harm circles. In order to be able to support their peers when there's conflicts that arise. We have a safe school ambassadors program, which again focuses on. From the, from the ground up, helping students to be able to create a positive peer culture and respond if they hear mistreatment as we know that the. The voice of peers is incredibly powerful. And we have African American and Latinx bridge programs and affinity groups to make sure that we're doing everything we can to help. Those populations in particular feel connected to our school. Next slide. So in terms of next steps, first of all, just analyzing a data and identifying more data needs, one of the things I had mentioned early in the presentation was just cross referencing the data that we have for. Race ethnicity with economic status and that could be an interesting way to look at what's happening at our school. And so just in general, looking at data, I and I think that. You know, I would love to see like a full staff development day with staff kind of looking through, like really digging through some of the data with particular student names. Because the teachers know the students really well, what's happening with this and what have we tried, what's worked, what hasn't worked? What, where are the gaps, those types of pieces? And so having some really strong inquiry questions to support that process. And again, you know, we are so fortunate to be in a small district where we really know our students and we know their full stories and. You know, through the conference process, our counselors have collected a lot of information about students that they already know well, but from teachers and what's working and not working. So I think really focusing in on particular student stories and you know, we try to. Provide those interventions and supports depending on what a particular student needs, which is different than what another student needs. But like when we're looking at data and we're like, okay, we have two African American students in this category who are, who are those students? And we know them and what is it that we can be doing to support them? And making the school environment work for them. Sharing best practices of where we're experiencing success and it's expanding, I think, just doing more work with that across our district. Again, we have a small district and we have wonderful people working in the district, wonderful community in our district. How do we, how do we share successes with one another? How do we expand services that are working at one school with an to another school, that sort of thing? I think really thinking carefully if with resources about how to provide targeted tutoring during school hours. Whether it's, you know, teachers being paid hourly to work with students, you know. During a particular period of the day here or there or that sort of thing. So I think the more we can do during the day, the more we can really. Own that piece of our responsibility of students who are struggling and and maybe aren't going to make it after school to a tutoring program, but we know they need it. So how do we, how do we provide that for them? We know that early intervention, all of the research is early intervention, you know, works best. And so, you know, how do we really work again together as a full district to provide that for for students? Um, and then, yeah, just again, looking at our entire system. So we're looking at what do we provide to the student, but then what do we need to do systemically? Um, and I think, you know, shifts, um, looking through the lens of UDL and MTSS, I think is really essential and important. Because we can make some really big and significant shifts within our system um that will, will really um. Really support students in a, in a generalized and a targeted way. So. I'm going to leave off there and. I will shift it back to our district leadership.
There's one point actually I wanted to add, just um something that came up that I forgot to mention, but was related to a question we got. So um, I assume middle school is the same as the high school, but one thing that we did see this year compared to previous years was a significant increase in the number of our students. Considered socio-economically disadvantaged. Um, so at the high school, it increased from about sixteen percent to the previous year to about twenty-three percent this year, which is a pretty significant shift. Um, nearly one in four students. There's a couple of things I would attribute that to. One is that the, we, I think we're doing a better job of identifying now. Because the way that we're asking the questions has been separated from just the free reduced lunch program. Um, but that does go into um how we're identifying students. So I just wanted to kind of add that to, to some of our interpretation of the data. And I will hand it over.
Well, thank you for that. Um, Dr. Shen, I thought you were gonna go ahead and chime in, chime in, but um. We're at the Q and A portion of the workshop. So Madam Chair, President Hinckley, I turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. And thank you both for this incredibly rich and dense report. So, board members, questions? Yeah, Vice, oh, Vice President Duron. Are you, you're like literally waving your hand up and down.
Yes, um.
All right.
Um, I have tons of questions and I have to respect everybody's time, so. I'm going to ask some very specific questions now and then ask my more general questions after everybody else gets an opportunity. Um. For both the principals and I, and Ms. Brill really referred to it. And would you be able to name every single child, student, sorry? That has two Ds and Fs at your school site? And specifically since uh. What have you, what has the school done since January to address those student needs? Two Ds and Fs is, I mean, that's so significant and I had asked that question because I didn't quite get two plus. Plus anyway, um, and so. I'd really like to know what are we doing at the school site even as we speak for those kids? Um, I know there was mentioned about what we offer these supports. My fear is that. The students, for whatever reasons, the kids are not there at those tutoring classes. They're, they're not doing all that extra and, and I would like to know why. So could. Both of you, I mean, that's my first question and then I'll, I'll come back to my. Third and fourth, second, third and fourth.
And I'm gonna ask if the middle school can answer that first followed by the high school.
Sure, happy to. Thank you. And thank you for the question, Vice President Ron. So um, I would say that as a team, um, and we have our student services meetings. Um, once a week, that is our counseling team, our admin team, our mental health team that all come together for these, these meetings. Um, as well as a special ed representative. As a team, um, we for sure know who all of these different students are. Um, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily gander that I could rattle off all the names off the top of my head right now, but um, but we are, there's our students that are. Talked about regularly at our meetings um every, every single week. Um, and given that we are also right in the middle of our conferences, we um have just been reviewing. A number of pieces around these different students. Um, and so. What ends up happening is if a student has two or more Ds and Fs, we are. Trying a number of different pieces. And again, there's a lot of different reasons why a student might have two or more Ds or Fs. And so we're tailoring the conversation to particular students. If it's a matter of homework completion, we're looking at um Cobra study. If it's a matter that there's gaps. Um, and there's in their math, we're looking at math support. Um, and so we are looking at interventions during the school day. Um, we're looking at counseling counselors meeting with them regularly to follow up and kind of case manage. So we're, we are looking to tailor the supports particularly. To each of these students, um, but are there students who we're. Constantly talking about and working on and shifting and trying to um. You know, find what's going to work. And when we have these conferences, they leave with an action plan, you know, we have fall conferences, here's the action plan, let's follow up. Is it working? Let's shift this, let's try that. So we're always um, always working on, on adding within the, what we have to offer for our students. Mr. McNally.
Yeah, I mean, uh, somewhat similarly, um, we have lots of systems that are designed to try to catch and support as many students as possible. Um, and we similarly have meetings uh with all the counselors, we're going through this. Of course, the counselors have caseloads of three hundred and twenty-five um to one at the high school, which actually is considered a pretty good ratio by California state standards. It is actually even better than the middle school. Um, so we have lots of systems, like I said, our, our intervention counselors regularly go through and kind of identify for their colleagues, who are the students that need some of those supports. Um. We as administrative team are often a part of those same conversations as well. We'll convene student success meetings, SST meetings regularly. Um, to try to work with those students, also try to coordinate with. The special education department where those students are being served by special education. And for example, have done things like called for IEP meetings or additional triennials or something along those lines to try to identify some of the root causes for those students. Um, I, I don't really see our challenge too much as being around identification as much as having supports in place. For those students, um, the students with two or more Ds and Fs, especially by the time they get to high school. If they have some kind of specific learning disability or something like that, it's almost certainly been identified. Um, and we're trying to address it through special education. Often what it is, is you know, uh, if a student has some instability in their home life and their, their environment outside of school, we try to support that as much as possible. Um, but it can be really difficult um within the, the school. And so. That's why we often will try to meet with those students one-on-one. Um, and our counselors often have things like ninth grade conferences set up. Specifically in their schedule to try to meet with and identify some of those students early on. So. Like I said, you know, I think our identification systems are pretty good. The, the place where I think we have real challenge is having a, the, all of the interventions we could possibly need to support everything for students.
Um, Mr. McNally, um. If you have, you know, the different team meetings, et cetera, and, and so the staff knows who these kids are. Do we know that in fact, these same students are going after school and getting the tutoring that they need? Are we pushing the kids to do it or what are we doing to support them? So we know all the interventions you talk or, but, uh, talk about. Are so key to helping the kids, but if they're not attending, not participating, you know, access is one thing, but, but. The kids actually being there in person, I, I'm beginning to feel that's part of the issue that the kids aren't participating and. Wanted to hear your reaction to that.
I think that's definitely a, um, a concern for us is that not, uh, you know, our, our students, a student will come to tutoring if they believe that tutoring can be helpful to them. Um, students don't necessarily always believe their performance could be better, which is one of the reasons why even things like relationship with a teacher can be really important. Um, and of course, some students might have other commitments after school. Um, that creates a challenge for them. So that's where something like advisory would come in. Um, but again, it, it requires the student and the teacher kind of, the, the teacher pulling the student in for advisory. When the teacher might have other things that they're also trying to do during advisory. So. Um, you're right, accessing supports outside of the school day can be a real challenge, um, because it requires students to kind of choose to do that. They do get to control their own time outside of the school day. Um, so we do try to build more supports into the school day. We also have eighty minutes a week of advisory time to try to support students and student uh learning as well. Um, I think you're absolutely keying in on a issue for us, which is how do we get students to access the supports that we have as well? Um, and that's been an ongoing conversation. I think it comes back to some of the tier one things that we've talked about, which is. You know, what's the point where you invite a student in for advisory as a teacher, keeping in mind that you as a teacher might also have. Hundred and fifty other students that you're also trying to support as well. And how are we creating some of those priorities?
I, would it be possible for the board to get a list of those students that have the, 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 the Ds and the Fs? Um, and um, cross-reference it to how many of those are actually taking tutoring? Be it in math, be it in social studies, be it in whatever the area they need that support because they're getting the Ds and Fs. Uh, of course, redacted names, but. So that the board can actually see that everything that's being offered at the two schools. Those students are there and actually receiving the services. Is that possible for us to get a list like that?
Um, I believe that we have records for. I, I'd have to see what level of records we have available for the tutoring itself, um, and what kind of sign-ins and those kinds of things are happening. Because we just provided as an open access program, we don't necessarily. Document every student that comes in and I'm not sure how far back those records go, but I could talk to the teachers doing tutoring about what's available.
Great. Um, you had mentioned, uh, Mr. McNally about relationships with the teachers and how key that is. And in particular, when we look at the numbers and the black and brown kids uh that are not making it academically. Um, that's one of the things we have to look at, right? How many, how many staff is there at, at either side to support these students? And, and who really have that cultural reference and can really relate to these kids? And the thing that, uh, you know, made me really sad is that you mentioned Spanish and that you have Spanish for Spanish speakers. But the, the Latino kids who are really, I feel failing badly here. Um, that, there's not a class for them. I mean, is that not an equity issue? I mean, I get it's an economic issue for you at the high school. Uh, but, but in terms of. These kids have, have certain skills and yet we're not supporting those skills and they have to go in as if they're acquiring a second language. I mean, this would be a plus for those kids if we're talking about nurturing and having those kids have a sense of belonging. This is really a key area for them to be able to do that. Um, and I'll, I'll end with more um. A question about in the kids, the, the Latino, black and, and other kids because um. You know, I, in my questions, I, I referenced the numbers of kids um at, at AHS. Uh, across the board for math, science, social studies. And in the fall of this year, I, I sort of gave up looking at past, you know, the pandemic year, it was, you know. Um, we, we finished that and unfortunately our kids didn't do real well, but, but now we're, we've already passed one semester, a fall semester. And, and at the high school, uh, Latinx kids were the top number of actual bodies. There were sixty-two kids with Ds and Fs. Uh, whites came next with sixty students, blacks had twenty-seven students at AMS in the fall. Um, in subject areas, Latinos were the highest with thirty-four. Uh, whites next with twenty-six and of course, because of the percentages of populations. Um, and blacks were six and two or more races were sixteen. And then, of course, I want to throw in the special populations, especially the socioeconomic, um, because. I, I, I feel we have to really look at those kids. Um, and, and also in terms of the special education kids, what? What are we doing different for them? I mean, are there accommodations when we're looking at Ds and Fs? And I have a, a general question about that that I'll ask next, but. But I, I just have really these concerns and whether we in fact are targeting all these kids that are have Ds and Fs. And, and I'd like to ask both of you principals, if you feel that, that you're comfortable that we are targeting these kids. And, and providing them with the supports that they need so that at the end of this semester. They're not going to have two Ds and Fs and hopefully they're going to have zero Fs.
I mean, I think it's, it's a significant. Challenge, I think, uh, to, to your question about even something like special education students. Special education students have their accommodations, of course, spelled out in their, their IEPs and part of being a student in special education is a case manager whose job it is to. Monitor their progress towards graduation. Um, I think. That, you know, looking at the special education students who are still not being successful in school, we often ask a lot of questions as to why that is. Um, and I mean, I can say a, a good chunk of my day today was actually trying to address that concern with a special education student that we have. Um, and our, you know, as that, our real concern with that student is that he's not attending school in a way that's allowing him to really access his. Access education um and be successful. And I think that that's where. I thought of where our concern is, is, is what interventions do we have to um, that we can implement with the. Um, the challenges that we actually are seeing with certain students. So. Um, I, I don't think it's a, it's an issue of really desire. I think it's a, it's a question of resources and how we direct some of those resources and. Um, kind of trying to get more resources and direct them accordingly. And like I said, one of our big shifts for a long time at Albany High, there was a real focus on. Intervention that was specifically academic in nature of, of saying that, that, you know, if, if a student's got a. Uh, an F in math and an F in English, then we have a math intervention and an English intervention. And we're shifting some of our thinking away from that to saying, wait a minute, maybe it's not an issue of math or, or English. Maybe it's an issue of how they feel as a student in this school. Um, and that's a culture shift that's not also going to happen very quickly. Um, and in the past two years, you know, we, we've been busy with some other distractions. Um, that I think have also made it difficult for us to plan some, some interventions. But I, for us, a big question is what are the ways that we're acting as a team to help students? And then what are the ways we're really making sure that all students feel welcome in our schools? Uh, you know, you called out specifically um black students and Hispanic students, two populations that often do not feel as welcome in schools. Um, as we would like them to be. So that's a question is how do we really create more of that connection as well? And that's not the kind of thing that we can fix quickly. Um, it's kind of, it's gonna take us a lot of time and a lot of focused energy. Um, in a place we're trying to really implement a lot more programs to create more of that connection.
Thank you. So there's actually a hand from Shelley Ball, who's, who has called into the meeting. I don't know if she wanted to respond to some of this before. I move to the student board members. So I, I wanted to ask, uh. Trustee Lira and trustee Dana, if it's okay with you if I move to her and then come back to you. Okay. Um, so Shelley, hopefully you're. Here listening. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, um, I, I actually just had a question, just like the student board members might have, so.
Okay.
So.
And we could.
Um, that, you know, here, you, you know, seeing the lists of all of the supports in place because it's true, there are so many things in place, but I, I just had a data question.
Okay, do you want to go ahead and ask and then we'll move on?
So for, for me, and it's, there's, it's connected to mental health, but the, the data um question I would most have wanted to see answered. Um, is the question of single DRF by department by grade. Um, and the reason I, as a mental health practitioner and as someone just super concerned about COVID. Um, and the impact it's had on our kids and what I'm hearing in, in the, in the counseling rooms where I work is. You know, I'm not good at this or I'm not good at that or I can't do this anymore. I can't focus. And so particularly with. Classes that, um, I think the language and the math classes where we don't really know what COVID. Did what, what the loss of traditional learning for a year and a half did to students. Um, uh, those would be the ones where I would think it would be most important to look just single, single grades. By department. And so for, for math, I think that would be critical um to look at grade six, seven, eight, nine and ten. Because after ten, they can opt out of math. I think eleven and twelve would be interesting, but my real questions would be what's happening in six through ten. And then for the world languages, I don't know when the middle school starts world language, but because that's also a subject that builds upon the last year, I'd be curious. You know, the year after the first year. So I don't know if you start in seven or six, but, but looking at the year after through, again, through tenth grade, because after that. You know, students can drop those topics. And that's been my biggest concern as a, as a mental health provider is what's happening with. Uh, a kid's sense of themselves as, as a math student or as a language student.
Thank you. So maybe we can come back. So it is seventh grade that they start language. Um, maybe we can come back at the end to sort of build a, a library of data that we would like, because I know you, you both also mentioned. Um, wanting some additional data moving forward. So I'm gonna. See if we can come back to that at the, at the end of the meeting. Moving forward. So I'm going to see if we can come back to that at the, at the end of the meeting. Um, thank you for that question. And now we'll move to, uh, trustee Lira. I think you had your hand up first.
Yeah, I, I feel like Shelley Ball like had a really great segue into what I'm going to talk about because it's very, very similar. Um, I was going to say that I really appreciated like the mentioning of the importance of utilizing like UDL and MTSS. And I would like also suggest that we look towards like mastery-based learning as well. Um, because I mean, yeah, I, I feel like, like, I don't know, I had this question right now and I kind of started weird. But I was going to say that I do agree that students definitely need to develop like strong studying habits. And I really think that middle school is a crucial time for like good foundation building in that area. And I do really appreciate that there are so many systems for intervention, especially as a student who's using them myself right now. Um, but I just genuinely feel like we cannot focus on the students alone. Of course, when it comes to like specific populations of students who are significantly struggling. I totally believe the interventions are especially important in those cases. But when students all around are particularly struggling in one or two of the same subjects over and over. That points to like, oh, just a really, to me, like a really big problem. Or an underlying issue with the curriculum. And I would really like to hear about like what we're doing to reevaluate and hold accountable like. Our specific subject departments and what students are particularly struggling with. Um, and like, do we know if it's like the lack of diversity in the curriculum? Does it have to do with the amount of homework, the kinds of tests, test retakes? Is it even like specific teaching styles? I'm just really in like teaching even beliefs like, is there? Is there anything that we've done so far and like checking in with these departments and which students are specifically struggling?
Well, one of the things we're studying, first of all, um. Trustee Larry, I really appreciate the question because you're now starting to get to the heart and soul of. Some of the issues that we've been grappling with in leadership and as a school board. Um, and so one of our responses starting, um, this upcoming year is that we're having, um. Some key departments look at their data. And collectively respond to that data so that it becomes more visible. Um, so that we engage in a visible learning, uh, like process. For example, um, when we have the data, we, we applaud those who are doing well. And then we hone in to some essential questions, i.e. Why might the students who are not doing well, um, not doing well? And how might we respond as a unit? A department and a, a staff and a district to address those kids who really need our support. Hence come the equity. And so you need that data so that we could start responding to data more strategically. And then start to adjust our resources to align them in the area where kids need the most. And so that's the practice we're starting to engage in. Um, in terms of accountability, because accountability is basically having it visible. And having a system to respond equitably to our kids' needs collectively. Um, and so that's, that's where we're starting to engage. Um, at least address that, um, area of accountability is the checks and balance. That's what accountability really is with not to, hey, you do something wrong, we slap you in your hand, but you have a check and balance. Um, anyone else like to add to that?
I, I appreciate that. And I, I think the only thing that I would add at this moment is. You know, when we're looking at practices that are in support of student learning, like I think it's really easy, um. For us to be caught up in, in the grades as well, we should as grades are indicator of success. But I think when we're looking holistically at. UDL and MTSS and how are we supporting students and how are we measuring success and all of those different pieces? I think it, it's, it's all interconnected. You know, like, for example, um, trustee there, you had mentioned about the, about retakes, you know? And that's something that we've now expanded to all, all three of our, um, grade levels in math that didn't used to be in all three grade levels. And, and, and it's a philosophical piece, right? That it's okay if students don't get it the first time round, but we want them to leave. The, what we're committed to is student learning, right? And I think that that's what the messaging, it's like, what are our infrastructures in place? That's just one example, but what are the infrastructures in place that show we support student learning? And I think when we look at how do we measure mastery versus compliance or homework? Or, you know, all those different pieces, I think there's a really rich discussion to be had across grade levels, um, across sites. Um, and so I think, you know, uh, you know, and I, and I think it's everything. It's what is the curriculum, are students seeing mirrors themselves in curriculum? We've been having a lot of discussions about that, and you know, across our district, right? And, um, but I think as we're digging into UDL and MTSS, to me, this is like this golden opportunity to really evaluate. Um, how we are providing true access to students? What do we can, what are, what are we, what are the underlying values? That we're calling success? And are those the, are, is, are those the values that we believe in? In terms of what we are trying to do to support student success? So that's something I would just add.
Thank you for that. And I just wanted to quickly respond because I, I like specifically at the middle school. I really love like being able to have the opportunity to really fully understand whatever I was learning. Like math has always been a subject that like I've had a little bit of trouble with, even though like my mom's a math teacher. Like I just still have like a hard time understanding the specific subject. So I really appreciate the opportunity to take retakes. Um, and like hearing that you've expanded to all grade levels is awesome. But I think like just with a lot of students at the, just the general vibe that I get from the students at the high school is that like. We sort of feel as if the transition from middle to high school in terms of like the way that teachers. Sort of approach mastery has just really, it's just really like, I don't know, discordant. It is just not a lot of connection there. And I think like, I think it's great to hear that there's a lot of discussion governing, but I really would love to see some more like action in terms of. Like how we can blend these two sort of sites together and their teaching philosophy as well as the way in which like, yeah, we view. Student, mental health and student success like you were talking about. So thank you for that.
And one thing I would add is that there definitely is a lot of ongoing conversation, um, both within our departments and within our, our faculty around questions around grading and, and some of those things. Um, you know, one point I would also just make as a, as a teacher who, um, allowed unlimited. Um, reassessment in different areas and had a mastery-based approach to, um, teaching when I was a classroom teacher. One of the things that actually, um, surprised me when I made that transition, not all my students took me up on the opportunity to redo things. Um, that a lot of students would actually, they were, that they didn't, they had an ingrained notion about what their ability was. And the fact that they could retake it didn't change their feeling about if they were willing to do better or not. Um, and I think that's one thing to, to address as well is that how much are we also running into what students own? Self-concept may be in certain subject matter areas. Um, the students have innate ideas about, uh, can they do better in certain areas? Which I think also informs some of why students do or don't access tutoring and some of those things. Um, and I can say that these are, these are topics that our departments are definitely tackling. Um, I can say that we don't have teachers that really get excited to give lots of Ds and Fs. Um, I, I can say that I think a lot of our teachers really are trying to tackle some of these questions as well.
Trustee Dana.
Yeah, um, I just had a, I, I wanted to piggyback off of what Shelley said earlier with the. Um, data on the single Ds and Fs. Um, I'd just like to see the comparison. Uh, I'm just curious about it. And then also I had a question about the data. So, um, was this like semester or quarter, um, for both the middle school and the high school? How, how was the fall and, and spring data sort of combined?
Um, the, those were grades that were pulled from student transcripts. So those are, uh, semester data.
Okay. The only reason why I was, I was wondering about that was because, um. I feel like quarter grades offer, uh, a chance for us to have a little bit of proactivity. Um, just because those are our report outs. And I'm hoping, um, that the counselors, um, that are reaching out. Um, are regular in terms of quarter versus semester. Um, actually I, I had a question around that too. So, so how regularly are the counselors reaching out to students?
Um, the counselors pull the grades directly from the grade books. Um, and not from what gets added on to transcripts or gets reported directly by teachers as part of the quarter or the semester grades. Um, and they're doing it on a monthly basis. So they, they pull data on a, on a monthly basis.
Okay, that's even better than I thought. Okay, I'm, I'm glad that we have that in place. Um, I was just concerned because I know I had a couple of friends that were really struggling over quarantine. Um, that I'm, I'm not sure were reached out to. So that was just something that I wanted to confirm is, is happening. And then, um, I really like the, I think, uh, principal Brill, you said it earlier, but. Um, I like the idea of getting intersectional data. Um, because I think that, uh, socio-economically disadvantaged students. Um, and then also like seeing that in terms of who, who applies under like a racial category and associated. Socio-economically disadvantaged category is really important, um, just so we can see how that kind of is spread out. Um, and then as for standardizing, uh, responses and stuff, I think that that is really important. Um, I, I liked the explanation of the tier one interventions. I think that's great. Um, and so I, I'm just, I'm overall optimistic. Um, but I, I do stand with, um, trustee Lira in that. I really hope that we can kind of take a deeper dive and look at, um. I mean, not even just curriculum, but also like how we might change, uh, the mentalities that students have ingrained. Um, in them and then how we can change that along with the curriculum. So yeah, those, those are just my notes that I found most important. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Davidson.
This is so informative and helpful and just shows how much more we have to, uh, dig into everything. It's just, I think when we brought this up in a meeting previously, we also, um. From other things that the board had heard, we, we discussed also maybe a discussion around reframing Ds and Fs. Um, as grades and using something instead that is like needs improvement, like we do at the elementary level and potentially. Having a discussion around just getting rid of those two letter grades in our district. Um, and instead moving it on to something that's, that's showing that, hey, this is an area that needs growth. And now we're going to address that area with you so that you have that, um, time for growth. So I don't know if that's been more of a discussion, um. Or something like that. Um, and then. I found it really interesting to see that ninth grade and sixth grade have similarities. And Mr. McNally, something you said really stuck with me, which was that students take more classes in ninth grade. And I was just wondering, is that something that we would consider maybe as a district? We want to shift where the load falls and how we encourage students to do that. Um, so that they're not entering high school, this whole new system. And taking on the heaviest course load all at the same time. Perhaps we have, you know. Different, I, I don't, I don't know, but different districts have grappled with this differently. Um, there's been different responses to it, but it's, it's an area for conversation. And I also really appreciate hearing the challenges that have been had in the district surrounding our language department. Cause I definitely, you know, in the community heard feedback about that. And I can see that it's, it's a really hard area. Um, so I'm just wondering how else we can support. Those teachers and especially the ones that we want to keep in the district, um, who, who emulate our philosophies. So if there's anything that either of you can think about to help with that, please, please share.
Yeah, man, I think I, I can respond to a couple of points you've brought up. I have done some, um, exploration of data around kind of questions of intersectionality. And students who may be facing, um, headwinds in more than one area. Um, and I can say that it, it, it's pretty much what you would expect. And I think actually, um, I would say that my own exploration with data is that if you, and there's some different ways to visualize this. Um, that I can, I can share and actually in some ways are more informative and allow a little bit more proactive approach to kind of understanding it. And we can actually see in some of the data. There is definitely a compounding effect of which students are less successful in our, um, schools. And it's actually really clear in the data. For example, a student who may be an English learner and then also comes from a socio-economically disadvantaged background. Is much more likely to face, um, certain challenges. Um, we actually have some of that data available and something we have just started to do at the high school. Like I said, we've been busy the past couple, two years, um, with some things. Is start really trying to use that system, something called the academic support index, which we borrowed from Berkeley Unified. To really more proactively identify some students needing additional supports. Um, which is, um, something that I can, uh, share as well at some point in the future. Um, that actually helps us identify the areas that we actually have the biggest gaps that we need to be addressing with our students. Um, and also identifying the ways those things compound as well, um, is something that we've done at the high school.
I mean, and I'll just piggyback on that and say, um, that I think, you know, bringing together people to look at data. Um, I know a while back in the district, I was involved in a couple of task forces that did this, but I think about at our site level, we've done this at well, as well. Um, and just really when we like dig into who the different students are looking at the data cross-checked and, and cross-reference in intersectional ways. I also think it's interesting when we look at our, you know, special ed data. Who are the students who are qualifying for special ed? Who are the students, um, how, you know, what does that look like? Do we have disproportionality happening in that area? I mean, I think all of it, it's, 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 um, we have a lot of really dedicated, intelligent people on our staff. Who, um, you know, are really know what's, who tried a lot of different things with different students and have found successes and have found. Um, challenges. And so I think really being able to, um, break this out in a number of different ways to look at particular students and really. Um, generate what, what are we, what are we doing differently next year? What's the thing that we can add on? What's the new piece we can try? And I think we're always looking to do that, um, but I think data gives us another intentional way of approaching it.
Trustee Dos.
Hello?
Yep.
Can you?
We can hear you. I think you were muted before.
Oh yeah, because I was just talking and talking. Um, I only have one question, which is, is there a threshold for the amount of, of students? Uh, that have like, um, failing grades in a particular class? So, um, like for example, if you have like one math class that has twenty-four students and ten of them are receiving Ds and Fs. Is there like a threshold or a mechanism where, um, there will be some intervention, uh, within that class? And, because I know that usually, or traditionally, it's if a student's getting a bad grade, provide intervention, tutor in and specific things. But if it's a larger number, um, is there like other mechanisms in place? Like maybe kind of checking in with the teacher to make sure that things are. Um, just wondering kind of how, how that's handled at the middle school and high school level.
I can start this one off. Um, yeah, so we, we do look at that data. Um, and oftentimes what we'll find is if there's a disproportionate amount in, in a particular class. Most often it's with a newer teacher that just hasn't calibrated yet to the rest of the department. Um, and generally our teachers do a wonderful job supporting new teachers and really trying to, uh, make sure grading practices are aligned in those pieces. But sometimes when we see, uh, we'll, we'll see a disproportionate number within a different class. It, it certainly is an opportunity for us to work with that teacher and figure out. Is it just a matter of grading practices? You know, that aren't aligned with the rest of their grade level department? Or is there something else happening that they need additional support with? Um, and, and you know, that, that, that happens, you know, kind of here and there and provides us with an opportunity to, um, then to support that teacher with. With either, whether it's about, um, teaching practice, instructional strategies, or whether it's about calibrating with their department.
Yeah, I mean, I think I just echo what principal Brill said. I, I think that, you know, we don't have a, we don't have a threshold. Um, I would say that triggers that kind of thing. It is something that we look at generally when we get the semester grade reports. Um, and this mystery has been submitted, one of the things that we can do is kind of look at some of the breakdowns, um, across different areas. Um, it's especially hard, a little bit in the high school considering the number of courses we have. That it can be hard to separate out, um. You know, we, we don't have that many courses that are actually taught by multiple teachers, but it's definitely something that we look at. Um, and, you know, if, if we see those numbers, it's something we definitely would want to inquire about. Especially if it gets back to a question of if these grades are really accurate of a student's ability. Um, and how do we really make sure that we have grading practices that represent that? While at the same time respecting teachers autonomy?
Uh, thank you. I appreciate that. Quick follow-up and then, you know, I see other people have their hands up. Um, is this communicated at all to the parents? Like if you see this trend, um, or is it, um, just kind of kept, um, internal? Uh, I, I would imagine that like if this was happening, um, you know, as a, a parent would might, you know, want to. You know, uh, hear about this, if this is like a trend, you know, um, because. I'm assuming it's not a great conversation when kids come home with Ds and Fs. And if it's, it's, you know, um, not one hundred percent on them, then, you know. Communicating that to the parent could, you know, save a lot of, um. You know, additional, you know, issues and. You know, maybe someone, is it communicated to the parents at all or, or how that's handled?
I mean, I think, I think it's a, it's a tricky, um. A tricky balance in when we're working around teacher profession. And when we're working around teacher professionality and how do we support students and teachers and families and all those pieces. So I, I definitely, it's not a, definitely there's no like blast home related teachers. However, if there was something where it felt like there was something where a student was graded in a way that really doesn't line up, then what the teacher's doing is then correcting that and reaching out to the family. So we do it more on an individual personalized basis as opposed to a blast out that could be really tricky for a teaching professional. But, but I think it's about making that right. And if it feels like there are students who received Ds and Fs and it was in a way that wasn't calibrated and aligned, then the teacher's working to correct that and work with those particular families and students around that.
Yeah, I think just to add on to that, I mean, we don't provide information out for, for a student's grades compared to the rest of a class or rest of another group, cause that um can provide also promote issues in the other direction around kind of competition um or ranking of students, um which is something we don't want to do. And in general, if we feel someone's practices are really not where we want them to be, that would be an evaluation matter um and a personnel matter, which we, you know, have, have rules around communicating those things as well. Of course, if we feel that someone's grades are problematic or the way they're doing some of those things, we would address those appropriately as well. And I mean, one of the thing too is that grading and under California state law, the grades are ultimately the responsibility of a teacher, which means that the teachers also need to be answerable for the grades that they, they award as well.
Thank you. Uh, those are all my questions.
Thanks. I put my hand up so I could say something since usually I go last. Um, so I'll try to make this quick. Then I thought trustee Boyd put her hand up. Um, I guess I have a couple of comments and then one specific question. Um, I mean, what I think we're all seeing in the data is sort of two pieces. One is the, the inequities that we're all pretty familiar with in terms of uh race and ethnicity and also the, the special population groups. And I think when I look at the data that, that's throughout the curriculum, right? It's not unique to math and language, even though our math and language D and F rates are much higher than the other subject areas. And I guess I kind of want to caution us to not lose sight of that because I do think just my own experience at the high school as a parent and being around a little bit is there's a lot of unevenness in how different departments approach grading in particular. So I think it might be an easy response to say, well, let's not give Ds and Fs, but what do we lose there, right? Then we maybe are losing the measure of whether we're actually doing a good job of educating students. And especially it might mask some of the inequities that we see in the outcomes. So if only four percent of English students are making Ds and Fs, but that four percent is mostly our students of color, that's a big problem. Even though that four percent might look low in this table compared to the twenty-six percent of uh math students, for example, black math students who are receiving Ds and Fs. So I think what I've seen in the high school that, that I'm a little concerned about is that there does seem to be a lot of variation in how grading is done, how, how, whether assignments are accepted late, whether tests are allowed to be retaken. And, and I understand we, we want to give teachers that discretion, but I'm, I want to keep us focused on. Our mission is also to make sure that students are learning, right? And grading is a sort of imperfect assessment of that if, if there's that much variation. So I, I'm a little, um, I guess I'm a little interested in seeing some data on grade distribution by department as well. Um, and maybe at some point kind of thinking about what does it mean to advocate for different kinds of grading strategies? If we don't also have a, a real way to measure learning outcomes that we're also having a robust discussion about. Um, so that's one observation. And then
Could I have been in comment?
Yeah.
I think, I think it's just important because um, you know, I think in, in many professions, you know, like you think like the medical field, like, you know, there's conferences and journal, different things that, you know, make sure to keep people up to date and, you know, shifting practices as best practices come out. And I think it's important that we treat our teaching professionals the same way. And I think our district cares a great deal about professional development. Um, and they're, and we're, we also have like in our contract limited days for professional development. And so it's always kind of this picking and choosing of, there's so many important things that we need to be doing with our teaching staff. Um, and at the same time, if we're going to either align or shift practices, there has to be intentional and specific time given to it. And I think about, I know at the middle school, like equity-based grading has been a topic that a number of teachers have brought up as being really essential and important and wanting to focus on, and some teachers have focused on. Um, but as a teacher who is working a million hours and is also investing in culture responsive practices and restorative practices and trauma and form price, all these different pieces. Um, I think that, you know, grading alignment in our district and what are the current best practices and what are the philosophical kind of underpinnings of those um hasn't been given the same attention as some of the other pieces. And especially in the middle of COVID and all the other things that we've been focusing on, but I think it's important. Um, and so it's something that I think i- if we want to really not only align, but also bring ourselves up to best practices with, with grading. Um, that's something we have to invest time and energy into, which, you know, is the professional development. It's the, the structured time to collaborate, um, you know, within departments, across departments, across schools. Um, but I think it's, it's a, you know, grading is very representative of values. What is it that we're grading? And, um, and we don't always all agree, but in the absence of these, these PDs and discussions and change, we're going to fall back on what we've always done and what we know. Um, and so I just wanted to, to throw that in there. Thank you for letting me jump in, President Hinkley.
Yeah, that's actually super helpful to think about. Um, I think that and maybe that leads us to thinking that that kind of PD and, and thinking about alignment in that way is important while acknowledging that it's, it's a huge lift. Um, so the other thing I wanted to just comment on is I wonder if it would be, to me, there are a lot of ways where we say that we support students focusing on schoolwork and not other things, but I think that doesn't always happen in practice. So for example, thinking about um some of what I've observed with athletics where there's no let up in the sports schedule over final season, over study week. And I know I've talked to many families of, of athletes who have concerns about that, but it's not, um, you know, so there's a, there are, I think, different areas where it would be helpful to hear from students and families about the places in which they feel that um they're actually not the, their culture isn't supporting them and focusing on academics or addressing some of their challenges with school. Um, so maybe this is a data piece of, you know, doing some surveys with students and families about what, what, how are you hearing about these interventions? Where are we falling short? Where, where do you feel there may be an inability for your student to focus on schoolwork in the way that you as a parent or a guardian think they should be able to do? Um, cause I, I think once, again, once, you know, we get to the high school, we want to give students a lot of autonomy. We want students are pursuing a lot of different activities. And I think, you know, not all fifteen, sixteen-year-olds are capable of sort of making effective long-term decisions there. So what are some ways we can think about the whole system and how we're really really supporting them to, to focus on school, not just saying, you know, bring that F up or you're not going to be able to play on the team, but actually saying, how can we help you do all the things that you want to do in school? Uh, because athletics or choir, whatever it is, is the way that you're connecting to school. Um, so that's just a thought. Um, and then the, my specific question is about, um, there are schools where uh, and Principal Brill's comment about the Cobra study period made me think of this. Uh, because we don't really have an equivalent in the high school. I mean, we have advisory, but we don't. Um, we don't quite have the same mechanism that some high schools have of sort of requiring students who are making a D or an F or have below a two-point-O or some other threshold um to be required to enroll in a study period during the school day. And then you would need the resources to provide whatever it is for them during that period. Um, and we know that, you know, even though students take a lot of classes, I think we've seen that um, Principal McNally, you and I just looked at this data like a week ago. But, you know, close to a half of our ninth graders are not taking seven class periods. Um, so I'm wondering if that's something that we've ever thought of as a way to incorporate tutoring or some other support into the school day is to actually require some kind of study period or offer it, or, or what would be needed in order to do that, rather than trying to just do tutoring outside the school day or deal with uh the advisory period?
Well, we, we do have uh what we call homework lab, um, which is meant to be an additional study hall time and also do some teaching of study skills and those kinds of things. That has been on our, um, on our master schedule and that we actually now currently offer two sections of. Um, so we do have that. We have not talked about making it a mandatory requirement for any particular group of students. Um, I think it, it could also be a challenge to try to schedule students into it mid-year if their grades, for example, start changing. I mean, that could require rearranging their other courses and things like that. Um, I can say that um our counselors definitely have had those conversations with some students. Um, and one of our things that we've talked about is kind of how do we proactively still create some of that same space for students to do better? Um, and again, I mean, one of the issues we run to is actually with our freshmen, about seventy-five percent of freshmen are currently taking seven classes. Um, but that shrinks to about, uh, I think about ten percent with seniors. But of course, as we've seen also the lower academic performances with younger students. Um, so it is something, but you know, we, we have a very full master schedule and trying to find additional space for those interventions. I think we could definitely value them. Um, but it's hard to find those, those spaces.
Got it. Trustee Boyd.
Thank you. Um, first I'll just uh appreciate and acknowledge um our principals' presentations, uh, the thoroughness of them and the care that's gone into putting them together and also brainstorming and trying to figure out um all the myriad of ways uh that we can support our students who are struggling. And um, thank our uh, my fellow board members here for um such thought-provoking um and informed questions. But so uh two, two things I wanted to um ask about or um kind of topics. One of them is um, can't really be gotten into here, uh, because it's on the topic of early intervention, which I appreciated. Um, uh, others uh referencing earlier and it kind of made me feel like if we have a workshop like this in the future, like there would be a benefit to having perhaps our um elementary school principals participating as well, just to, to talk about, or if it's possible for, for anyone on the Zoom now to talk about any sort of like collaboration or information sharing or sort of working together that's happening. You know, from like an elementary school situation where we have assessments and we have ways of, you know, sort of understanding students who are um potentially struggling already and, and it would seem like there's, I would imagine at least some through lines between, you know, those students who um are, you know, there's perhaps areas that are identified and then, you know, moving on into the middle school. And then perhaps those areas of, this seems like it might be a concern turning into, you know, like the Ds or Fs potentially at the middle school. And then also when we talked about the importance of the professional development and cultural sensitivity and, and anti-bias and all of those sorts of trainings and professional development that's happening. Making sure that there's a through line so that those things are happening at the elementary schools as well. And I know that they are certainly in pieces, but I'm not sure if there's um like a unified, this is what's happening across our elementary schools, um, way that that is, is taking place just to recognize that the issues that exist here exist there as well. And as has been said already, that if we can kind of um start to, to break those apart at, at that level, that, you know, we, we could kind of have some of our work done for us. So um, just wanted to throw that out there and I'm, I'm not sure if there's anything um that can be said about that at now or perhaps just thinking about how we think about this sort of global issue in the future. Um, and then the other uh area that I wanted to um uh ask about and, and talk about was um, I know Principal Brill referenced um like the possibility for like a professional development day where there's an opportunity to focus on um individual students and teachers who are, are aware of, of these students and, and have knowledge and counselors as well, ensure who have knowledge of specific issues. And um Principal McNally at one point talked about, you know, um, needed interventions and, and providing what we can, you know? And then it just made me think about what are the interventions that we have identified that would be helpful, but that we're just not able to provide for various reasons. And I appreciated President Hinkley talking about, you know, having the tutoring happening during the day. And you know, how that can be implemented in recognizing that different students have different, um, you know, requirements or difficulties in doing something outside of the, of the regular school day. Um, but also just made me wonder about, I don't know if there is ever a role for like a coordinator in, in other school districts or, or some sort of a person serving a task where their focus, because as uh Principal Brill was just saying, all of our teachers and all of our counselors are managing one million different things. And, you know, there isn't an opportunity to, to really focus. I'm wondering if there's ever a, a position where the, the focus is on our students who are, are struggling and who are underperforming. And um so that there is a person who um actually can know, like, you know, across sites perhaps. These are our students and this is this particular student, like we offer this intervention, but they can't use this because of this reason. And this has been like a bar here and this person seems to kind of doubt themselves and they don't take teachers up on retake. So there really needs to be counseling provided here to kind of strengthen the student and make them, you know, understand their own, their own like potential. So I just wondered about that. If there's a, a potential or a space for, for someone whose designated role could be working on that. And, you know, that person would be working themselves out of a job, hopefully that their services would be needed less in the future. Um, so, and, and then lastly, just pulling on um what Vice President Duran was talking about earlier with how, what are the services that are actually being utilized by students? And just like the idea of perhaps having someone who's, whose role it were to focus on this could kind of help get at that. But there, it does seem as if there are a lot of really wonderful services and interventions that are provided. And the more information we can have and the more we can drill down on exactly what's being utilized by our students and, and what isn't and why not, like how much we can know and how we can particularly tailor our services, it seems would be um an important step forward. Thank you.
So um, just uh, my first job as an administrator in Albany Unified School District was coordinator of alternative education. Um, or one of the things I did was a lot of what you just talked about, kind of planning and implementing um interventions and doing those kinds of things. That position was eliminated three years ago, four years ago. Um, and uh, that's when I got moved over to be an assistant principal at the high school. And I can, uh, unfortunately, one of the things that happened when my role changed, I tried to hold on to a lot of that. But a lot of it fell by the wayside because I just had too much else to do um in my role as an assistant principal. Thankfully, the intervention counselors did pick up some of the slack around that. Um, but we did three, four years ago have much better data um about like where tutoring was utilized, who was implementing it, what their subjects were. Um, and then a little bit more kind of case management that just kind of came with having a position that really was focused on those questions. Unfortunately, we, we don't have that position anymore.
And just one other piece I wanted to piggyback and comment on is just in terms of the handoff with elementary um to middle. And one thing that's been really wonderful and successful over the years is um working with our fifth grade teachers and elementary principals um to help build support classes early on. We also have um meetings where we, where the counselors meet with every single fifth grade teacher and the fifth grade teachers come with their list. Here's students that you need to be aware of right away in terms of needing additional support. This is what we've done, this is what we've tried. This is, you know, the, all those pieces of information so that we capture that, you know, that knowledge and we're not starting from ground zero in sixth grade. Obviously, those are students who've come from through the Albany schools. But um, but that's something that I think has been just incredibly helpful um for us in sixth grade of really being able to um address student needs um right away. I think that things would look really different without that process in place.
Great, thank you. Uh, Vice President Duran.
Um, I have a list, but I'm going to make it really quick and maybe Dr. Shin will be the one to follow up on this. Um, but I had questions regarding, could we receive data for males and females um by Ds and Fs? And I gather teachers do not have a uniform policy about grade uh grade standards and expectations, but I'm assuming that at the beginning of the year, teachers do give to parents and students their uh requirements and their, not so much requirements, but actually their expectations for, I'm, I give students an A if they accomplish so much, you know what I mean? So that, do we have that? Does that actually exist at the middle school and the high school? That parents can in the early fall see that so that students know exactly what the expectations are of each teacher?
Are you referring to a syllabi?
Exactly. Well, not just the syllabi, but, but Exactly. Well, not just the syllabi, but, but the specifics about grades. So that parents know, right?
Usually as part of the teacher syllabus, it would have, it has the, how students are graded, how they're evaluated, what the policies are with relation to late work and those types of pieces as well. And those are, they're to students often needing to be signed by parents and also provided to parents at back to school night.
Yeah, the, at the high school, grading expectations and grading policies are required. Part of a syllabus and the syllabus needs to be able to be provided to a parent upon request.
Okay, great. And then if we could have at some point the, the data that shows us if the current interventions that you have at both schools, if they're working, meaning at the end of, of spring, for example, are those students with Ds and Fs no longer receiving Ds and Fs? Given the intervention and if we could have, you know, that list of students, if they're getting interventions and if they are, what's the result of the interventions? It would be helpful to know if they're actually working. And, and then to just close it by saying that we shouldn't, you, you work so hard, both of you, I know. And, and so I would, if you could give us a wish list, a small wish list, we will be working on, on the budget upcoming. And, and, you know, we really haven't done much in terms of focusing. I mean, we've tried to do some on social emotional, but I think it's time we really do things that maybe in reference to what Mr. McNally was talking about, about a person that you might need at the high school that could really focus on this kind of work. So, so if we could get, you know, two or three things from each of you that you think would just make a difference for you in terms of as a follow-up to this workshop tonight.
I'm gonna say to the principals.
You want my wish list now?
Yeah, here's the opportunity to put two or three things on the table, things you've been thinking about all along as relates to student achievement. Because one of the things, whatever we do in terms of adjusting resources, we do want to start evaluating the, those resources annually to see the effectiveness of them. Is it increasing the achievement, reducing the Ds and Fs? Is it closing the achievement gap, heading towards leading, getting rid of the achievement gap? Those kinds of things. So speaking in terms of student achievement, we have our Vice President Durant say, hey, what's your top two, three recommendations if you had a wish list and money wasn't an issue? And that could be hypothetical, but I'm sure you guys have thought about this. I know you have a lot.
My, my top two would be money for paying teachers for additional tutoring so that we can provide some tutoring during the school day and after the school day, but really specifically targeted on where we see gaps. And then a, and then a, a money for a higher salary position for someone to coordinate our after-school Cobra tutoring that we'd like to put back in place. And that uses our high school students as tutors, but we need someone to coordinate. Thank you for asking that question, Vice President Duran. I appreciate that.
I mean, I, I could give you a very long wish list. And if you want to follow up email, I think I can, I can definitely provide that. I have a couple of ideas. I mean, one thing I would really like to see is staff focused around what in most is called child welfare and attendance. CWA, which is often kind of a social work type position that really addresses think about like Maslow's hierarchy, those students having challenges accessing school because of some of those really basic things. And having staff that can really be focused on addressing some of those needs, even our counselors that we have are also academic counselors. So while we really think of them as focusing on probably a lot of the, the core needs of students, they're also sitting there writing letters and doing college advising and doing some of those things. So having staff really focused on some of those, those core social emotional needs. Additional staffing and training around kind of creating more culture responsive practices. And those kinds of things in the classroom, I think staffing to specifically address interventions and plan out things like tier two and tier three interventions. And then I'm actually going to give you an idea that is free. That I think could be really good too. And that is let's try to fix one problem at a time and have a laser focus on that. So if we really want to focus on like UDL as something that can be really effective for creating access for all students, really as a district, all of us together focusing on that one specific topic and trying to really address one thing at a time and recognizing that addressing some of these gaps is going to be definitely a process over time. And then a very large budget around social emotional needs, of course, would be really nice.
And, and I'm just going to piggyback on one piece, which is just that right now we're functioning with three full-time counselors at our school who are all just like working incredibly hard to keep up with the caseload and the needs and the academic and the social and all of those different pieces that they do. And I can't imagine us having less than three. So, you know, just being able to have enough funds to have those three be permanent at our, at our site would be amazing.
Great, thank you. I wrote all that, all that down. Trustee Dana.
Yeah, I, I just remembered a point that I wanted to just speak really briefly on. I think something came up where we were talking about students forming connections with teachers and how, how that might be related. Or I, I'd say is very significantly related because usually students that have connections with teachers are more inclined to participate in their classes. And I don't know, I, I just thought it was a, a good thing to bring up. And so personally for me, when I form connections with teachers, it usually happens to be with teachers that I find engaging in their, in their curriculum and stuff. And so I just really wanted to point that out that I, I appreciate the teachers that put in the effort to, I guess, make their curriculum relevant to students and then connect it back to student life. And I, I just wanted to say that because I, I think it's, I think that connection part is really important. I, I know trustee Leira wanted to build on this, but I couldn't let the meeting end without speaking on that really quickly.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Kristy Dana. I had very similar feelings in terms of like what I value from a teacher and what makes me as a student the most receptive in, in learning as well as like doing better on tests and being more engaged in the class. It's really just teachers that are passionate about like bringing student life and like connecting that to current events. And you can really do that in any class. I've had some really fantastic teachers who will just start the lesson off. It's just a question with students seeking the opportunity to connect the people at their table. And like, right now, currently I have a table group in one of my classes that I have never really talked to, like besides when it comes to like just getting the work done. We're very like work oriented and some of us are very confused as to what's happening and without like having built those personal connections sort of. I feel sort of at a loss in terms of like what, what I can really accomplish and like how to connect with the people around me. And I, I think I would really love seeing more development on just like, I don't know, I think just what I want is to see more diverse, diversifying of the curriculum in every single class. And then every single sort of subject, because I think when you tie in like the classroom environment to make it feel more like community-based or more focused on, I don't know, things that are happening around us, students feel more engaged and more inclined to really want to participate in these sort of classrooms. And I've noticed that like, a lot of the teachers that I've had that have like, that, that succeed in this specific area are ones that like have been pretty like fresher, like newer to the district. And I love, and I would love to see more like collaboration between like teachers in terms of like their sort of styles. And I don't know if that like is something that's already occurring, but it's something that I've definitely noticed just in my years at the district.
Yeah, just to like quickly add on, I, I think that like in general, the efforts that you, Principal Brill and you, Principal McNally have been doing to diversify the staff has really been helpful and has allowed for different students to form different types of relationships because the staff is more diverse. And so I think that's just something that we wanted to point out before the, before the end. Yeah.
Great, thank you. So we have a, a lot of follow-up, a lot of good notes. We are, so we do have this workshop specifically on math and I do see there's a public comment. I'm not, I'm not wrapping up the meeting quite yet, although we are over time. We do have a workshop in two weeks specifically on math, which I think will allow us to sort of experiment with deepening some of the kind of data that we look at and specifically looking at things like how are our programs being utilized or intervention programs being utilized? And then some of the, the kind of deeper dive on the data, I think some of this, well, all of this data really also belongs in the conversations that our student achievement committee is having. So I'm also hopeful that that committee can take up some of these data questions. And then when they bring a report back to the board in May or June, whenever that's going to be, that we'll have another opportunity to have these conversations about what the data is really telling us, what, what shortcomings there are in the data and, and then think about, as Principal McNally said, how do we pick a focus? And, and really maybe decide how to spend the following year and trying to achieve some very specific goals. So I'm going to move to public comment and give any, anyone else, I see one hand, but if anyone else wants to raise their hand, please go ahead and we'll start with Annie J.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm Annie J. Fishberg. I'm a teacher at the high school. And I just have to run through a whole list here in my two minutes. So the first thing is I would love to see how our numbers compare with nearby districts. I think it's really, really important to recognize that these problems that we're addressing don't exist in a vacuum and weren't necessarily created by Albany High School, although it is an important role as a teacher to make sure that we recognize the struggles that our society has and ensure that the things we're doing in school are dismantling them rather than perpetuating them. I would love to see questions about class sizes be part of this conversation. I teach two math, two classes right now and they're both at thirty-two students. With thirty-two students, that means if I don't do anything else in class, I just one-on-one check in with my students. That's three minutes per student in a ninety-five minute period. Which makes it very hard to form those really personal connections that I want to be forming with my students, even though that is something I highly value. I would love to see how these numbers compare, not just with past COVID years, but with the years before COVID. I think that as a math department, we have done a lot to try to change the way that we grade in the past ten years since I've been at Albany High. And I'd love to kind of see how those trends are working or not working. I would also love this conversation about mastery learning. I think this is super important. And I want to just acknowledge that we had a school-wide conversation about mastery learning. We found a grade book that would enable teachers to really track mastery grades. We adopted this grade book at the high school and then we decided that it was too expensive and dismantled it. And I think that that really falls into this conversation about picking a focus and really sticking with it. A lot of these changes take a lot of time to implement and we just really have to make sure that we are focusing on something for long enough that it's going to have those lasting changes. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. It's very helpful. I don't see any other public comments. I do see a board hand though. Trustee Dos, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I was wondering if we could kind of talk a little bit about the current numbers for the support classes and is there a limit? And if there is a limit, are we at that max or? And then if we are at that max, or if we do get to that max, if that happens, then kind of what's the backup plan or what are the additional things that we have in place for, for students if we reach that?
Yeah. So for the middle school, we cap our support classes at approximately fifteen to make sure that the students can get the individualized attention that they need. Typically, we don't have a problem with meeting every, all the students' needs within that, within that class. We also are always, our goal is not for students to stay in the support class forever. Our goal is that we're giving them the support they need to be able to be successful in general. And then we move them out of the support class into a different elective. When they, when they show mastery as assessed by both their support class teacher and their teacher in the regular class, whether that be math or English language arts. Occasionally we do find that we're full and we'll have a couple of kids on the waiting list and be looking for opportunities to move them in. If that's the case, and in the meantime, I know their, their regular class teacher is looking to provide extra support, the counselor is providing extra support. And so we are just always looking to try to layer on what we can while we're waiting for a space to become available. But we want to make sure to keep the classes small enough to make sure they're actually effective in, in supporting our students.
Yeah, the high school is somewhat similar. We, we generally try to keep class sizes smaller in our more interventions focused classes. But the problem then becomes that we, we have fewer spaces for students in those classes. We have a couple of ways of balancing that out. The real challenge, of course, has been the availability of, of FTE to actually run those sections and have that available. We, you know, open up as many sections as we can, but we always operate within the constraints of how much FTE that we have available at the time. So for example, this year we expanded the number of homework lab classes because the number of requests was higher. And we had some FTE available to do that.
So maybe, sorry, I was just going to say one, maybe one of our future data points would just come up a couple of times is that, you know, capacity versus utilization for all of the, the different kinds of intervention supports.
Yeah, thank you, President Hinckley. I think that would be great. That's a really good suggestion. Dr. Wills, you know, I'm hoping that we can kind of look into not having a waitlist similar to we, similar to when we learned about the waitlist for our counseling department. And so I'm hoping that we could provide additional support. And, you know, make sure that, you know, our, our principals have everything that they need to eliminate that waitlist for our students. Because I don't know if they have ti- time to wait. And I, and I know that you mentioned, Principal Brill mentioned that there's additional supports available that we, you know, try and provide, but I mean, the classroom teacher is already, they already have a full load. So I think it's unfair to put the additional burden on them. Our counseling department might be the busiest department in the district because we're going through a global pandemic. So I don't think it's fair to put the additional work on them. So if we could work on putting something, something in place so that one, our students who need us don't have to, don't have to wait. Because I mean, I just don't, I mean, they're not in a position to do that, right? Because, you know, things are happening. So, but I'm not expecting that to be solved like tonight. But if we could, you know, start to work towards putting the things in place to, you know, eliminate that and you know, getting these kids, you know, what they need to not be on their waitlist, that would be amazing. So I, but I appreciate everybody, you know, sharing kind of where we are. And appreciate the work that's been, that's been done so far. And I think we're, we're headed in the right direction. I do have another question, if that's okay, President Hinckley, I'll, I'll wait to see if.
I think a very quick one. I want to let our principals get a good night's sleep before tomorrow. So.
Abs- abs- absolutely. They deserve it, along with all of our other staff online today. So I appreciate that. My last question is we often kind of have what's the best way? Like traditionally, it's students aren't doing well, let's get them the support that they need. Let's help them, you know, they're, they're, they're either behind or whatever it is. So traditionally, it's always like, let's kind of figure out. Has there been kind of discussions or is there? Or do we see like a trend where it's kind of shifting away from putting it all on the student? And what I mean, what I mean by that is it's kind of a team or kind of a collaboration thing, right? So in order for our really high performing students to do well, their talking material, they do well, they move on to the next section. For students that might not be at the more high performing level, they need, you know, a little additional, you know, or maybe they You know, or maybe they learn differently, or maybe the information, you know, isn't retained the same way. So it might it might require some more, you know, creative, you know, kind of avenues or things like that. So I guess my question is, are there discussions around the less traditional route of what's being taught to students and kind of how we approach the help that they need or don't need?
Madam Chair, President Hinckley, just one one quick note of business. I did promise Principal Brill that we wouldn't be here long at eight fifteen because she has to pick up a kid from an extracurricular activity. So I'm going to excuse her. So that's why she has to leave and you'll see her 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 face off the screen shortly. And then I want to get back to trustee Dos's question because I think it's a good one. And if you can repeat the last part of that, trustee Dos.
Sure. Can we can we first say a formal thank you and goodbye? Disappear. Thank you so much. And yeah, enjoy the rest of your evening.
I really appreciate the discussion and all of the energy going towards our students. So thank you.
Great.
All right. Thank you for being here. I'm sure I can repeat the question. Traditionally, we look at students are doing bad, gives them additional support, additional help that they need. Is there a discussion around not putting it all that way, but shifting shifting it to, you know, looking at other reasons why students might not be performing at a high level?
The short answer is yes, and we're doing it looking at a system approach, both of which is our MTSS, which I'm going to ask that staff give the board a brief overview of what that really is. And then our UDL, our universally designed lessons that are quality based to allow all students to access the curriculum and have opportunities, greater opportunities to be successful. And then looking at those who are not successful, what kind of interventions we would put in place for them based on their unique needs. So we're adopting a systemic approach to catch more kids and to ensure that more kids are successful through a systemic approach. And Principal McNally, feel free to add anything you may like to or Dr. Shin, since that's your arena anyway.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. If I, thank you. And if I may speak, what trustee Dos may be getting at and what everyone has talked about tonight is the reciprocal relationship between teaching and learning. And when we utilize data to identify gaps in student learning, we are doing that in order to inform our instruction. So when we see the gaps in student learning, we are then to take a look at our teaching. What it is that we taught, how do we teach it? And how do we need to revise that teaching? How do we need to tailor that teaching? How do we need to enhance that teaching? How what might we have to redirect that teaching in order to support the improvement of learning for students? So please understand that when we talk about improving student achievement, we are doing it through our teaching practices. So our theory of action is if we are able to increase adult learning, we can improve student achievement. And we have a vision to lead by learning. And that is why we have visualized the Director of Professional Development role for next year in order to ensure that we can implement adult learning across all of our five campuses and to align that learning using the MTSS as well as the UDL framework that we believe is best practices. And again, enhancing our teachers' instruction, our core instruction, our first instruction. The first instruction must be the best instruction. We spoke a lot about our intervention strategies, our intervention courses, but really and truly where the promise of improved achievement comes is through that first instruction in that core classroom. So our vision is to again utilize the professional development platform and model to ensure that all of our teachers within our system, K through twelve, have the same learning. The UDL framework is really about how do we design lessons that are accessible to all of our students? How do we tailor every single lesson that we develop that will allow trustee Dana to be engaged as well as trustee Lira, who have two different sets of focus, two different sets of modalities of learning? How do we in that one ninety minute segment, address the needs of all of us that are in this on the Zoom call today by providing that learning through text, providing that learning through videos, provide that learning through online research, present oral presentations as well as slide deck presentations, just different ways in which we can not only offer that learning, but also allow students to represent that learning. So we are really excited about what we are undertaking next school year in terms of providing this robust professional learning opportunities for all of our teachers within the system in order to enhance their core teaching during that first instruction. And as we heard trustee Dana and trustee Lira speak to the impact of the inspirational teacher, the passionate teacher. Our teachers, our educators must also be inspired and feel passionate in order to inspire their students. So we really believe that we're if we're able to provide the type of professional learning that is inspirational for them, they will in turn then be able to inspire our students. So please know that we are very cognizant about the need to enhance our teaching as we talk about improving student learning. And it is our commitment to work to align the entire system. And trustee Boyd spoke about this as well. What is happening at the elementary school should be happening at the middle school? Is there articulation? Is there communication? And that is exactly our plan for the upcoming school year, that there will be articulation K through twelve. And all of us will engage in that robust learning of the UDL and the MTSS framework that will allow us to then in turn inspire and better educate our students.
Great.
As you guys can see, Dr. Biggs has great competition. Very well fed and very detailed and much needed response. So thank you, Dr. Shin.
Yeah, I really appreciate hearing that vision. It's it's very, very helpful and I think a great place to wrap up our conversation tonight. So thanks again to everyone for coming and presenting, answering our questions, reading the packet, paying attention. And as I said, we do have a workshop in two weeks from today specifically on math focused on some similar questions. But our next regular board meeting is next Tuesday, March twenty second. And with that, we are adjourned. So.
I just say one quick.
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to give one quick shout out. First of all, shout out to our principals for the tremendous work that they're doing on sites with their teams. And thank you for sharing all of your ideas and all the things that you're doing with us. At the same time, I really want to put a special shout out to Ms. Linda Williams, who was responsible for putting together all of this data. She is working overtime. Every time we come up with a new data request, she has to go back to the drawing board. Yes, yes. And she's working very, very hard. And with this new set of data requests, I just want to again, recognize her and thank her ahead of time for the tremendous work that she'll put in for the next set of workshops. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much and see everyone in a week. Good night.